Jan, could you do us the favor of taking roll call?
Dan Vincent. Is he not here?
Oh, no. Wait, look, they fall.
Bob Leahy, Jim Hufford, Tim Heiss, Chad Spence.
Here. All right. Just to add to the consent agenda, any changes or corrections? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
We'll be accepting the consent agenda as presented.
We have first, or we have second?
I'll second.
James, James would take roll call vote? We're always favored sitting by saying aye. There we go.
Aye.
Can we close? Fourth was that countdown?
Got to get that straight, all that straight.
Jan, what, it's what, you're going, I'm making you look good. Anyway, um, the reports, um, just want to kind of give you an update, some of the things we're working on. Met with a company looking at drainage for the, for the whole entire park out there, uh, from the soccer fields, right down through the heart edge of the park where all the wooded areas. And, uh, then, uh, there's, that we're also looking at kind of painting and leveling this, the soccer field so it slopes towards, towards the drain and then draining that swampy area across the road as well. So, uh, should have that back to us, uh, probably by next council meeting. He's, I met with him three or four times, laying it out, so, so looking forward to that. Then, uh, I know if you've seen Consolidated Models, which is a company that's right across from Bowser's Barn, uh, they're adding about a 21,000 square foot building next to their existing building. We got, we're looking at a couple of issues on drainage and whatever else, but I think we're going to get most of that worked out. Then, uh, um, we should, by springtime, when the warmer weather gets, um, we're in the process of ordering pickleball at, uh, be out there at the tennis courts. And the best way to explain pickleball, it's, uh, it's tennis for old people. And, uh, so, um, I guess I fit, get that bill. So, but it's, uh, be another addition to the park where, uh, things can happen, bringing more activity out there, so. Jan?
Jan, anything?
Council members, chat?
Um, not the moment.
All right. Tim?
Uh, I don't have anything.
Jim? Bob?
I just wanted to thank the chamber for the nice banquet the other night. Very good. Actually, I had two things.
Oh.
And now, uh, as one of my walks out to the park, I just wondered about, we were talking about pickleball, but I was thinking about if we put a volleyball court up in the tennis court rather than trying to maintain the sand.
Oh, yeah.
And, and it floods and when there's a lot of rain. I know it wouldn't be the same trying to dive for a volleyball on asphalt, but, yeah.
It'd be cut and fed.
It might be easier to, you know, maintain a volleyball court up there on the tennis courts rather than, than out there on the grass.
Actually, that's something we could probably take a look at and have both of them there because, uh, we, we redid one of the tennis courts, right?
Like at the very west, the very west end, yeah.
So we got, we got that and, uh...
Still have a lot of rooms available there where you could have a pickleball and a, and a volleyball court possibly.
I will, actually, I'll have Schwerer take a look at that, so.
That's all I have.
All right. Monte?
Yes, I've got, uh, we distributed to you the 2018 update for the comprehensive plan last meeting. And, uh, if you had any comments or, or requests that you'd like included or any other critique, uh, if not, I've got a resolution here that where we can accept that. It really helps us in filing for document or for, for grant applications and such as that to have a, an accepted comp plan program. Comp plan.
Any questions or comments? Any motions?
You don't want to vote on that now, it's under new business.
Well, it's under new business. All right.
So you can vote on that.
Let's go and vote on that.
Okay. Attended a workshop in Greenfield, Indiana today at Endot for a local tracks program. It's a new program that addresses needs of railroad overpasses, underpasses. And so we are looking at applying for funding to redo the Jackson Pike underpass there to make it usable for truck traffic in both directions. There is 162 million in that program that the state has put in there and it is state funding, it's not federal funding, so. It looks like it was a project just kind of made for that particular area. So we have Midwest Engineering already looking at some preliminary, uh, figures on it for us and we'll, we'll look to apply for that and hopefully that, uh, we can get something done with that and it would really help commerce, I think, from, not only from 32 to get to like Frank Miller in that area, but to bring truck traffic from 28 down Jackson so they can get to the Frank Miller Industrial Park and, and all that area. Would also help to keep some of the truck traffic from, you know, driving through the center of town.
Downtown, yes. Did we look at that once before with Westler? Did they do some preliminary work on that?
Yeah, yeah, I think it was just some very...
Oh, okay.
But, yeah.
Something to do with the, the drain out there or something, if they lowered the road and it had to be regraded and stuff all the way up.
We just put a pump.
Yeah, maybe you have to put a storm lift station in there, uh, but...
I remember I believe something about that was...
If we're regrading that too, then maybe we can look at just moving it maybe a little bit to intercept that water that comes off.
Yeah.
Up there by Great Road, I think that's a big drain goes out to the river anyway.
It's, we still, it's not as bad as it used to be, but we still have a little bit of an issue there anyway. We had this last...
It was closed, it was pretty much closed off the other day.
Yeah. And they, one day it was, but they barricaded it. It wasn't terribly deep.
Right, right.
Six inches deep.
Nothing like it used to be.
No, no, it wasn't like two, two feet deep.
No, it used to be, it was a car.
Yeah.
We have some stormwater issues in a number of places too. As time goes on, we're going to have to kind of figure out how to address some of those. And then we've got some places where we really need stormwater extension, where there is no stormwater. And we have a couple of lines that will either need replaced or, or some pretty good point repair on as well, like Clifford Avenue and that area, so just to, to tell you where. And I just wanted to, to thank the public work staff, they've just have really been, uh, the last couple of weeks especially, and, uh, and they just keep doing it in the rain and the, and the mud and, and whatever. So we just really appreciate those folks and that's all I have.
Well, go, to add to, uh, to that, uh, the, uh, have you seen your, in the packets, the monthly reports by the, um, so they gave a kind of a review of the lateral inspections, what they're running up against and they're finding a lot of different issues out there. But, you know, the, the one thing that, uh, you look at a wastewater treatment plant, getting the excess water out of our system, I mean, you're really looking at one house at a time and all these laterals that are clay tile, that are broken down, that've got cracks in them from trees and whatever else, so, uh, they're, they're doing a heck of a job out there.
And that's keeping I D E M off of, because they just, again, failed us for bypassing. But we write back that we are, we do have this lateral inspection program going, uh, other things with the collection system and they're, they're good with that as long as we're doing something, so.
Uh, old business, um, chamber update? Anyone? He's next. Well, it's just Ryan.
This is just Brian.
Is it with a Y or an I?
It's with an I.
Doesn't matter, I guess if they're writing checks, all right?
Okay, for the chamber, then, uh, thank everybody for coming to the banquet Thursday.
I got it, not to interrupt, but I will. You recognized, uh, Roy Kangie and I, I got, I, I just got teared up, I mean, for that, for...
So did I.
That was, that was very cool that, and, uh, the person that recognized and whatever else did it, that was an outstanding job, so.
I thought it all along.
Yeah, well, I know.
But that was really good too, yes. Then our next venture is going to be our citywide garage sales on Memorial Day weekend. And then we will be collecting for fireworks because we will be taking that back. And I don't know if anybody's talked about, last week, month, I said something about office space or maybe leasing the building next door, if anyone's been set on that.
Leave it up for discussion. I'd actually include Jan down there too in the discussion because it's her office.
Well, and like I said, I, I'm, we're very interested in the building, yes.
This, this building.
At least, yes. We're very interested in it.
Well, just to give you an idea, this space right here and back there and the bathrooms where else was 75,000? To give you an idea of what, what it's going to cost you.
You had some issues that, like that is...
Yeah.
Well, I know you were going to wait to see, like, you know, and we can wait to see what happens with the, we're not, we don't need it tomorrow, but, um, maybe a week from tomorrow.
We can do it.
I'm kidding.
Do you have any speculation on how much space you would like to have in terms of, like, in a, in a, in a space like that?
Well, we have enough for, uh, for that building, you know? We have enough office space and right now it's being housed, you know, in various places that I do have right now, but...
In other words, you could fill that space?
We could fill it very easily.
But it, for, for a temporary reason...
But it's a temporary office.
If we've had office space back, uh, because we're looking at taking...
We just really need a place for an executive director to work and, and rebuild the base of membership. That's got to be our first priority.
Because we're, we're going to get rid of the safe, right? And kind of reconfigure that space back there where we could put two desk and a horseshoe in that space, could we? I'm asking Jan for permission.
Can we get a desk, you mean, we have to have two desks back there, but, yeah.
Yeah. We measured off, I think we'd fit. I use the, the alarm method.
How comfortable, and, well, I don't want to speak for you guys, but if I've heard you guys correctly in the past, you guys have been in agreement that it would be nice to have a storefront visibility to the Chamber of Commerce.
Right.
So how would you guys feel about something where you occupied that space at the time being to have something to house out, house out of, that would be in conjunction, obviously, with the city building, but then start formulating the plans as terms of what we, what we really would be looking at in terms of getting that finished?
Right.
So that can be your spot? Does that make sense? I mean, how comfortable would you guys be to sound like that, so that way we would have a goal?
Anything is good because the face that the chamber needs is an executive director, someone who directly interacts with the businesses, rebuilds the membership base, and then we have the finances to do something.
Yep, makes sense.
And we're not going to progress that way until we work on those finances first.
Good.
So if anything that you would offer is a good deal.
Well, there's a spot over here, you got not only the community room and the red room over there to meet people, where you got the space back in, in, in the event that something, you know, you need to meet somebody in a private setting.
That's all we have.
Does, do you guys want to talk about it anymore, if, I mean...
I agree with Chad.
Well, yeah, I, if it's, if it's amenable to the...
Well, as long, I mean, I, I guess I'm thinking it needs to be temporary.
Right.
Eventually, we have to, because if it got busy, we can't get that...
That's what, yeah, that's what I'm saying. It would have to be temporary, yeah.
Yeah. So, in...
And right now, we don't, we do not even have an executive director. I mean, I, I'm the president and I've kind of been doing both roles. And it, right now, it's probably just a temporary, even if we do get an executive director, until we do have volunteers. I have two volunteers that will help.
What place have we got for the old sweet shop?
It's for sale.
What was they asking for?
How much you got?
How much are they asking for? Would it be cheaper to, for something like that than what it is trying to remodel a place next door?
I think they enlisted 75,000.
Well, I'd be about to say, let's fix it up next door, which is all it is.
Well, I look at temporary and the fact that if we don't get an executive director in place and rebuild the membership base, it's going to be temporary.
Indefinitely.
The reason I said something about the old sweet shop is because that's right in the main area. It's right next to the art place there, you have other businesses on the other side. It's really a nice place for something like that.
Yeah, and, and any of those things would be, but I just don't think there are starting place for us if we can get a temporary office and, and, and that would attract an executive director more than somebody working catch as catch can.
The one, the one thing you just mentioned, city garage sale coming up and whatever else, but anytime you have, have anything that needs to be for the public or whatever else, please just call Mary Ann and, uh, we'll, we'll get it put on the digital sign out here. Uh, I, I just thought, you know, like for our dinner, I mean, that would have been cool to, uh, to get, you know, let the people know, uh, for the public and whatever else. But anytime you got, you know, something going on, we'll get it, get it put up there.
Chamber announcements, really, on that.
Yeah.
Deal.
So, I'm going to pull the, just each one of you, do a consensus, or... Yeah.
Well, how feasible is it? What would be a feasible timeframe to get that cleared off where somebody could just set up temporary shop back there?
We're in over, but as long as we can...
Before next January.
You should be able to do it by then.
What, what, seriously though?
Next January, we need to make the biggest membership drive we have made in a while and have a contact spot and executive director in place so that that membership would take up the... I, I don't, this, this personal, I don't believe the organization can live off of fundraising. That this membership's important. Uh, we've got all the things in place. I will take more of the management role in that and make sure that all businesses are contacted and the certificate and, and the stuff gets out to them.
That's all.
So, yeah, before next January would be plenty of time.
Okay.
That's all we need.
We should be good with that.
Have you met with Randolph County Tourism and Economic Development? About, the reason why I throw that out there is, um, I think there could be some synergies there.
Scotty.
Yeah, through Scotty and whatever else.
You know Scotty or...
Metal.
Metal.
So.
You guys good for that?
Yes. Well, I guess, uh...
We have a consensus.
You had time to wall it over.
What's that?
You had time to wall it over.
Okay. Well, let's just keep working on, see what we can do on our end and, uh, was we got to get rid of the safe and, and, uh, that's going to take two minutes, you know, boy, or actually, one, two, three. Four council hours.
Think I may have helped put that in.
Yeah, I think you did.
Thank you.
No, thank you. Ryan?
Yes?
How you doing?
Doing great. How are you doing?
I'd be better if it was warmer.
Yeah, me too.
But my son's getting married this weekend, so I'm going with him on his honeymoon, believe it or not.
I don't think I want to know anything.
We got all separate sweets.
That's good.
Yeah?
Uh, okay, okay, the housing authority deal that we talked about last?
Yes.
It's fine. It hasn't been signed?
Yes, I'm going to bring that over here. Do you need to take that back with you? Don't need tonight, so I give it to you.
Okay.
It's all signed, no rights.
It's signed by all?
All parties.
And no rights.
Even you need to be agreed on?
Yes.
Okay. Who's the president?
Ted Lahey.
Ted Lahey, okay. All right. Uh, the only other thing is I think my next priority probably should, for council or mayor's permission, I feel like my, my next priority needs to be Midwest TV and, and getting, or working on that.
Let's, um, you want to text Linda?
Sure.
And see, and when we can all meet.
Okay.
I'm, it'd be good if we met this week and sooner rather than later, so, I mean, I'll get something set up on him. I'll break free and do whatever.
Okay. And then I don't have anything else.
How about, um, like, Kobe's going to get with you on, and, see where, where the condemnations are at, whatever.
I need to get with Bernier.
Okay.
Because what I found was that several of the new, uh, several of the new condemnations, they were old ones.
Okay.
And that's how I found out about the one that we already had.
Yeah.
We already had, had, got our order, so I do need to get with Bernier and Kobe, yeah.
You know what would help us or help maybe council is, um, on, maybe we, we put a running list?
Perfect.
For what's been, it, could you provide that with us?
Sure.
And then we'll, we'll attach it, see what, I get a blue sheet so I can flip to see where you're at.
Yeah, that'd be easy, easy, make it easier for us to keep track of the various properties and compare it if we see something compared to whether it's already going on.
So what's the one, we don't know.
And actually, on the next water, it's along that line, so, we're asking, putting on the back of the water sewage bill, the, you know, neighbor sees something, you know, to report issues, whatever else, even if it's for a possible condemnation as well. And they just, we're going to put, uh, the, uh, access to whether it's on the police department's Facebook page or they can contact, uh, the police department direct or even contact Mary Ann. We'll give them different means of contacting to help speed some of this process up.
Okay.
Help the area, so.
What about the community Christmas building though?
Oh.
Shouldn't that be done here soon?
Yeah.
Because we're building that.
Yes.
Yeah, because he's got to put the siding on.
Yeah.
All right, I'll have that, I can have that by Wednesday up here too.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Thanks, Jan. Ordinance number 2018 dash 06, ordinance to amend title 15, chapter 151 of the codified ordinances of the city of Union City. It's the second reading. And that is just basically the codification of what we've been doing, Jan, for the last couple of years?
No.
Okay.
This is ordinance to amend title 15, title 15. This has to do with no person, property owner, landlord or property manager shall knowingly agree to rent, lease or allow a property to be occupied that is not eligible for water service because of non-payment or under restriction due to any city ordinance.
Uh-huh.
And this was supposed to, like, Monty said, help with, with someone who comes into, or rents an apartment and then they find out they're not able to have water turned on.
I remember that. Oh. Any questions by coun, council in that regards?
Second reading.
The second reading, I'd entertain a motion.
We adopt ordinance number 2018 dash 06, which is the ordinance to amend title 15, chapter 151 of the codified ordinances of the city of Union City on the second reading by title only.
We have first or a second?
One second.
James would take roll call vote?
Bob Leahy?
Yes.
Jim Hufford?
Yeah.
Tim Heiss?
Yes.
Chad Spence?
Yes.
The next one is the ordinance to amend the text of the unified zoning ordinance. It's ordinance number 2018 dash 07. Uh, this is, uh, basically the changes that Randolph County take place. This is also the second reading as well. Any questions in that regards? Jim, you have anything to add or?
No.
Okay.
I explained it last time.
All right. I'd entertain a motion.
All right, we adopt ordinance number 2018 dash 07, which is the ordinance to amend the text of the unified zoning ordinance of Randolph County on the second reading also by title only.
We have a first or a second?
I'll second.
James would take roll call vote?
Bob Leahy?
Yes.
Jim Hufford?
Yeah.
Tim Heiss?
Yes.
Chad Spence?
Yes.
Okay. The next one is, uh, we discussed it earlier, the resolution 2018 dash R dash 02, the resolution to approve the, uh, Union City, Indiana 2018 comprehensive plan. We had a, further, earlier discussion, any other questions or comments? Not, I'd entertain a motion. To adopt...
Barring no further comments, I will move to adopt resolution 2018 dash R dash 02, which is the resolution to approve Union City, Indiana's 2018 comprehensive plan as presented.
We have first or a second?
One second.
Who's that? Number's two.
Right here. Whatever.
James would take roll call vote?
Bob Leahy?
Yes.
Jim Hufford?
Yes.
Tim Heiss?
Yes.
Chad Spence?
Yes.
Just wanted to update you, we are working on, uh, an outside proposal for basically entrance signs coming in Union City and, uh, wayfinding signs throughout the community, or we'll give you a map, uh, it's coming up, but, uh, we'll show you the, uh, you know, basically we're showing, uh, as you come into town, beyond the, the triangle out there and then also the triangle on the curb on 28th. One on, I think, Monty, I think we should probably add, um, is, uh, home of Governor I Z P Gray on that as well, because there's enough space on the bottom, like, we could do that. It's a pretty sizable sign, I mean, it's, uh, you know, just, uh, it doesn't look anything like what you see like in Wayne County or like had something a little different, more maybe a little industrial looking, uh, but we'll, we'll have, uh, pictures for you at the next meeting. But, uh, you know, when you're thinking, you're trying to tell somebody as you're coming into town where's Harder Park? You know? So we'll have something, uh, coming in on 32 and, uh, you know, where the police and fire department is, where Jus Lane's chocolate, where Watson's Nursery is, and kind of getting people through town and around, and then I like those points. So, did that have Frank Miller on? What's that?
The, his first business locations and all.
You know, I, we need to put Frank Miller on, uh...
I have to send people to Frank Miller outlet store.
Yeah. Right, coming in, we need to have that.
Yeah.
Especially their outlet store.
Yeah, because of the outlet store. I see that the, the, where people come from a lot of distances to the outlet stores.
Mm-hmm.
So I, I say I constantly have people ask for me to stopping and, or calling.
Yeah.
So.
Well, next week, I think I put a note out for the groundbreaking for the governor's plaza. Uh, I'm not going to be able to make it, but, uh...
What day is it?
Wednesday at 10, 10 o'clock.
This Wednesday?
Next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday.
And Ted Lahey, uh, he'll speak in regards to, uh, Governor Gray and, you know, a little history about that as well, so. But those can attend, you know, make your way over there, uh, to the courthouse area and, yeah, just look for the crowd.
So it's going to be Monday?
It'll be the 18th.
What's that?
It's the 18th.
Is it the 18th or 19th, Jan?
18th, it's Wednesday.
18th to 19th, which is Thursday.
Okay.
Okay, Thursday.
18th, 17th, 18th is when you're going to... Kentucky?
Yeah, that's right.
Oh.
Yes. And then Jan, we have the bids to review, then also, Jan, we also have the, the change in the salary ordinance.
Yeah.
So, Monty, I'll turn it over to you.
Uh, yes, we have, uh, one of the condemned properties that we got, which actually, uh, we did get transferred to us on tax sale by the county, uh, 411 North Walnut Street. Uh, we did put up for bids for the demolition of that and we received, Board of Works opened those today. Uh, we have one from land and excavating for $12,200. Uh, one from... Balil excavating of land for $15,000. And one from Logan Ray Excavating for $18,500. It makes land and excavating the low bid on there $12,200. I think that was Board of Works recommendation.
And again, that address location is on Walnut Street, uh, is two houses, the second house from now, they go into the, uh... It's, it's been abandoned for some time. it's, it's been abandoned for some time. Any questions or comments from council?
If not, then I will move that we approve the bidding of $12,200 as proposed by Land and Excavating for the demolition of the residence, or the property at 411 North Walnut Street in Union City, Indiana.
We have a first and a second?
I'll second.
James, take a roll call vote?
Bob Leahy?
Yes.
Jim Hufford?
Yes.
Tim Heiss?
Yes.
Chad Spence?
Yes. We had, one thing that didn't make it to the agenda, it's actually ordinance number 2018-Bash-08. It's ordinance amending the salary ordinance. We have a, we're looking to make the change for a lab technician for part-time. And what we've done is putting in a range between 1265 to 1605, and that's basically the, what a lab tech, what we pay for full-time. Full-time is between 1365 and 1605. Right now, we have Wendy Polling, she's a college graduate. What is, what is her degree in?
Agriculture and biological.
Biology, yeah. So she's, she does part-time, I think, up to 19 hours, and 11 hours, I mentioned earlier, she was chemistry biology major, and she also does our IT work here as well, works for, part-time with CDO. And jokingly, somebody said something to her about it today, and she said, "Yeah, I'd be very much interested in this." And it really helps Rob out because we, we worked that position off and on, actually, Rob's trained for that as well. But it helps free him so he can get up and then work out where he needs to be. So, so what we're doing is adding the, the part-time range from 1265 to 1605. Any questions from council? I'd entertain a motion.
I move that we adopt ordinance number 2018-Bash-08, which is the ordinance amending salary ordinance by title only on the first reading.
We have a first and a second?
I'll second.
James, take a roll call vote?
Bob Leahy?
Yes.
Jim Hufford?
Yes.
Tim Heiss?
Yes.
Chad Spence?
Yes. I don't know which copy you guys got. Monty didn't have a typograph, did he?
Did not have a typograph, like.
To suspend the rules or?
Yeah, let's do that. Suspend the rules and.
I'm going to vote out, I'm moving, suspend the rules to vote on the second reading.
I will second his motion.
We have a first and a second? James, take a roll call vote?
Bob Leahy?
Yes.
Jim Hufford?
Yes.
Tim Heiss?
Yes.
Chad Spence?
Yes. All right, so we suspended the rules, so we're going to vote again on the, for the second reading. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion except for ordinance 2018-08, ordinance amending the salary ordinance.
I will second his motion.
Second reading.
Oh, sorry, second reading.
James, take a roll call vote?
Dan, oh, sorry, Bob Leahy?
Yes.
Jim Hufford?
Yes.
Tim Heiss?
Yes.
Chad Spence?
Yes. All businesses wishing to address the council? Just state your name and address and nature of business, and you have three minutes.
My name's John Duffin, I reside at 1267 Newbury Road, Union City, Ohio. This morning, I just happened to go to, I want to make sure, the council meeting, so I went onto the internet and went to the Union City website, and I was looking through the website a little bit, and just for the heck of it, I read about ordinance 2017-03, the lateral inspection, and I printed it out from the website. And I'm going to presume that what's on the website is actually what's on the books that you all signed and voted in. Well, much to my surprise, this afternoon, when I went down to pick up a certified letter from the City of Union City, I found that I'm in violation of the very ordinance I was reading this morning, except I'm not, because this thing says, notice of violation, lateral inspection ordinance 2017-03, please be advised that you have not contacted the Union City wastewater department to arrange for lateral, sanitary lateral inspection required by city ordinances 2017-03, second three. So when you look at this, there is no requirement for me to do that. Number two, just for a heads up, the postal lady indicated, oh, we got a lot of people upset about, about this, which is neither here nor there. If you're going to send out notes of violations, this probably needs to be rewarded, rewarded, or you need to change your ordinance, but they don't work together. Secondly, or, yeah, secondly, the website has no 2018 council meeting notes or any of the wastewater board minutes or any of that kind of thing. So if you're going to have websites, you probably ought to be up to date, or at least kind of close to being up to date. That's it.
Thank you, Jack. Jan, I just realized I've collected a couple of these down here, I'll give them to you. The next council meeting is Monday, April the 23rd at 6:00 PM, and the Board of Works is same day, Monday, April 23rd at 2:00 PM. I'd entertain a motion for a gentleman. We have a first and a second? All those favor signers saying hi? All right, same time, need you.